Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of Wednesday, September 21st, 2022. At this time, I'm going to call upon everyone to stand and if we can pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that we all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers past and present. Thank you. I have an announcement. Our next regular scheduled meeting is on Wednesday, October 12th of 2022 here in this room. Next matter we have is a continued matter, and it's our public hearings portion of tonight's hearing, is the use variance 2022-01, which was continued from August 24th of 2022. The petitioner is Claudia Arsenio. The subject property is 155 Ofa River Road, also known as MAP 69 lot 16. The property is limited, is in a limited industrial area, at least a portion of the property that's in question here with us that's been part of the petition. The petitioner in this case is seeking a use variance to construct an 80-foot by 100-foot square foot structure for a marijuana manufacturing facility, and they're seeking relief on the Article 4, Section 375.4.2 applicability and Article 4, Section 375.4.3 special permit uses. So gentlemen, since the last time this came before us, and at some point, I'm going to call upon the petitioner's representative, I believe it's Attorney Manning who's here in the audience. We did receive a letter, and this letter was as a result of some concern that we had had about whether or not they had met or satisfied some of the APR requirements. This letter was addressed to a Paula Collins, who I believe is a representative of the petitioner, at least as to this facet of what they're trying to do. And the letter says, "I'm writing to you," and it's dated Aug- August 2nd of 2022, and it says, "I'm writing to you regarding your submission of June 7, 2022, made on behalf of your client Claudia Arsenio regarding the above-mentioned property. Please be advised that the Board of Directors of the Farm Bureau Agricultural Preservation Corporation met on July 19th, chaired by its president, Warren Shaw, and with a quorum present. The Board reviewed the agricultural preservation restriction and heard reports from its clerk and counsel. The Board affirmed that whereas the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, in collaboration with the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, has determined that with the appropriate licensure, cannabis might be lawfully cultivated, processed, and sold on and from land burdened with an APR. Accordingly, with the appropriate licenses and permits, cannabis may be grown, processed, and sold from Schofield Farm. The Board also reviewed the terms and conditions of the residential structure within the building envelope, more specifically, B1, the maintenance and use of such driveway to access the residence and other portions of the property, and any existing trails and farm roads on the restricted area substantially in their present condition, or is reasonably necessary for the use thereof, or hereinafter permitted through approval of the grantee under Section C herein, and, B3, within infrastructure envelope, the construction, use, maintenance, repair, and replacement for single-family residential purposes only of one single-family residence, together with an access drive and parking, and appropriate pertinent structures such as a garage, swimming pool, and fencing, and including gardening and landscaping incidental to such use, as well as buildings or structures for agricultural purposes. The Board found no provision within the APR instrument that requires or obligates the existing structure within the infrastructure envelope to be used as a residence. However, the Board found there does appear to be a restriction that the use of the driveway is limited to access the residence. In the event there is no residence, the grantee may prohibit the use of the driveway for any other residential access. The Board further reviewed provisions of Section A2 of the APR instrument being Subpart 2. No existing building, residential dwelling, structure, tennis court, artificial swimming pool, road, parking lot, mobile home, utility pole, tower, conduit, or line, or other temporary or permanent structure or improvement requiring construction within the lot area of 96,964,000 square feet, which is roughly 22.1 acres, shall be improved, expanded, reconstructed, or relocated on the restricted area unless approved by the grantee under Section C. Accordingly, the Board found there is no obligation that the residential structure need to be need to be physically occupied as a residence. However, pursuant to the terms of the APR, the structure must remain a residential structure, and therefore, the Board reasoned that any alterations proposed and/or executed must be consistent with the residential provisions of the Massachusetts Building Code. Lastly, the Board raised concerns regarding the APR, land outside of the building envelope. Pursuant to the provisions of the APR instrument, the agricultural field in its entirety must be sustained as commercial agricultural land other than forest land, and the existing forest land must be sustained as productive forest land. In order to confirm compliance with the purpose of the restriction, the Board determined the landowner should be required to present and report to the Board of Selectmen an annual farm plan demonstrating satisfaction of such requirements. And it says, "If you should have any further questions, contact me. It's sincerely and it's Mr. Brad Mitchum." All right, gentlemen. So before, obviously, we've got the petitioner's representative who's going to come before us. Is there anything that you gentlemen have any questions or concerns with with regard to the letter? Oh, I need to reiterate. Dr. Agi has previously recused himself on this case, and tonight's no different. He's reasserting that he is recusing himself to have any participation in this case. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Any questions or concerns at this point, or any comments before we bring the petitioner's representative to sort of elaborate on this?
Mr. Chair, I have maybe a couple of questions on the, on the decision, and probably when Attorney Manning's up on the board, we can ask.
So at this time, I'll call upon Attorney Manning.
Good evening again.
Yes.
Good evening.
You know, the last time we were here, starting with Mr. Chuba, you all expressed concern that we needed to get Farm Bureau approval for growing cannabis when your lot's restricted by an APR. Again, we've complied with your wishes, and the letter provided by the Farm Bureau unequivocally states that cannabis might be lawfully cultivated, processed, sold on and from the land burdened with the APR. So I would submit to you that we've complied with your request, just as we did with the redesign of the building. Now, we wanted prior Farm Bureau approval, you have it. So therefore, I would ask you to consider approval of the petition.
Thank you. Well, let me ask you this, Attorney. Well, if you have some questions, I'll let you ask your questions.
I just, I need a clarification, Attorney Manning. I agree. I mean, we had that, and we appreciate your, you coming back with what we asked you to do first with the redesign of the building and then the affirmation from the Farm Bureau. I don't know if you can explain to me the last, the second last before the last paragraph, where it says, "Accordingly, the Board found there is no obligation that the residential structure need to be physically occupied as a residence. However, pursuant to the terms of the APR, the structure must remain a residential structure." I don't understand what they mean. I guess you can have a residential structure, but you're not obligated to occupy it?
I interpret it to be exactly what you required in regards to the actual facility. We wanted a metal building to cultivate marijuana. You wanted something that looked like a barn.
Right.
So we redesigned it to look like a barn, but it's still basically a commercial structure. I think what they're saying is, is that we're not going to raise the house or reconstruct the house so it looks like an office or something like that, that it's to remain looking like a residential structure in accordance with the Mass. Building Code. You know, no different than, I mean, my office isn't a former house. Mr. Maderis' office is in a former house. Still looks like a house, but it's an office, and I think that's what they're saying.
So they're referencing the exterior appearance or the physical appearance of the structure, not the use?
That would be my interpretation of it. Keep in mind that we still have to go back to the Farm Bureau for approval of final plans. We haven't got to the point of final plans, of course, because we haven't gone for site plan review or taken that next step, but we do have to go back to them for a final approval, and I think that's what they're going to be looking for, something so it continues to look like a house in a barn versus an office in a manufacturing facility.
All right. So Mr. Braga, obviously, you have an interpretation that you make of the, this correspondence at some point. So obviously, they're before us, they're seeking the variance, and I don't know whether or not it's exactly what Attorney Manning is saying, that they're trying to, they're trying to suggest here, but that's one interpretation. I guess you could, one could argue that's one interpretation you could take from that, from that paragraph. The problem I have is that if we were, we were moving forward with this with the understanding that we're specifically, at least I was, with a specific condition that the premises was not going to be used as a residence, that it would not be a residence, that it was actually going to be used as a, as an office space that was some, in conjunction with the operation of the grow facility. Now, when I read this, I don't know whether or not that that's something we could still do, because they want this to be a residence. They still want it to be a residential structure. And I guess, you know, Attorney Manning's argument is it's still, you know, from its, I could maintain its appearances to look like a residential structure to potentially satisfy the requirements of the APR. But I'm not certain that that's necessarily what they're looking for on their end. So I guess I'd like to see what your interpretation would be of that if this were to move forward.
For me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
According to the Mass. Building Code, we have two ways. There's, there's a dwelling unit, and then there's habitable space. And residential code dictates a residential structure will have the following. A space in a building for living, sleeping, eating, or cooking, bathrooms, toilet rooms, closets, halls, storage, or utility spaces, and similar areas are not considered habitable spaces. The office, it would be, is considered because of, it's a place for, for, it's a place for working. This is all considered in the Mass. Building Code. It's for sleeping, eating, cooking, and that's the interior. That has nothing to do with the exterior. The interior of residential structure must maintain this. A dwelling unit, again, a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. They're both consistent with each other. It has nothing to do with the appearance of the structure. The residential structure is defined as this, habitable space and dwelling unit, and what must remain inside for it to remain a residential structure per Mass. Building Code.
So would your understanding be that if we were to put a specific condition that it's not to be utilized as a residence, then therefore, it could no longer be a dwelling unit?
If, where they put that it has to remain a, it says, "Per this, we have the alterations proposed must be consistent with the residential provisions of the Massachusetts Building Code, which must meet these. The dwelling unit and habitable space for it to remain by Massachusetts Building Code."
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
Again, we, we're not going to use it as residence. We have no problem with the restriction against it. Otherwise, we'd be probably want to follow the 500-foot restriction under the, the special permit for the overlay district. I think, I think you can't get hung up on that aspect of what the Farm Bureau is saying. Again, we have to go back to them with final plans. They want, they said they, it doesn't have to be used as a residence. So I tend to doubt, they sound like intelligent men, I tend to doubt they're going to have us put bedrooms in a place that doesn't have to be used as a residence. And what, I think there's just some linguist, I guess some semantics that need to be worked out with them, but again, we have to go back to them with these plans. And we intend, interpret this, we're going to go back ultimately, if we get there, with a plan that keeps it looking like a residential structure, as they stated. And then we'll get to the issue about whether or not you need bedrooms and other things within there. I don't think that was their intention, because it would be, it would be contradictory. One sentence would contradict the other. You don't have to use it as a residence, but you have to maintain it as a residence? That wouldn't be consistent. And that's what I think they were trying to say, similar to what you were trying to say, that you, while it is a, a commercial building, you didn't want it to look like a commercial building. And that's, that's where I think we'll hash out, once we get to the point of finalizing plans and go back to the Farm Bureau for their final approval. So you still have to approve everything.
We have a gentleman in the audience that'd like to speak.
Well, are we?
Hold on, before we get there. Do you want to say something, Mr. Human?
I do. I'm concerned about the requirement that the structure not be, the, the growing building not be within 500 feet of a residence. And the Farm Bureau has said in that sentence, and I agree with you, that that paragraph is unbelievably confusing, because they still want it to be maintained as a residential structure. We had a previous case come before us where they were going to be two grow facility, or two facilities within 1,000 feet of each other. And we asked town council for an opinion, and town council came back, and my memory is said, "You cannot have the second, you cannot waive the 1,000 feet, or change the 1,000 feet. It's mandatory. It's, the language of the bylaw is, cannot be changed." So we couldn't, if we wanted to, as I read it, and what council, town council said, "Give you a variance on the 500 feet." So that creates a mess, in my opinion. When you first came here, I didn't have a problem with what you were asking for being outside of the area that the town said, oh, it must be within that particular area. But as we moved along, I got concerned with the APR, and what the Farm Bureau was going to say. And I was hoping the Farm Bureau would come back entirely in your favor, but that paragraph is a problem.
I think they can't, you know, again, you know, as I've stated from day one, this is a process, and, and we're trying to follow the process in a logical order. We, we can't go to the point of finalized plans and go to the Farm Bureau until we know if it's even permissible under zoning. You know, and the engineering, as Mr. Chuba can tell you, the engineering for these finalized plans will cost tens of thousands of dollars, you know, and to put that burden on somebody before they even get the approval here. So, so, you know, they, I think they point out a few issues that they want addressed, and I think, again, I think it's poorly written, but again, I think they're just talking about the appearance of the structure. Put the restriction on it, that it cannot be used as a residence, because that's what we've said we're going to do, and that's consistent with what the, the requirements of the special permit in the overlay district. And then when we go back to the Farm Bureau, I think that'll be hashed out, and, and we'll get a better interpretation of what they're saying. But I mean, the, the main thing is, is, is again, you know, I, I've, I've been doing this for years. I sat in your seat for 14 years in my hometown, and I have never seen somebody have to jump through so many hoops. Every meeting we go to, there's a different thing. You know, the first is the design of the building. So we re-engineer the whole building to that satisfaction. Then it's like, oh, well, the Farm Bureau approval didn't come first, since they reneged on their initial letter. So we go and do that. The question always was about the Farm Bureau, is can you grow marijuana when it's subject to an APR? And they've unequivocally answered that, thank God, and that we can all understand and agree. It unequivocally is allowed. Therefore, I think you should proceed with the vote, put your restrictions on it, and then we're going to have to deal with that, both at the site plan review and back when we present the plans to the Farm Bureau.
Thank you.
If I may.
Yeah, sure.
I'd like to go back to Attorney Manning's comment, and I'd like to read this again. "Accordingly, the Board found there is no obligation that the residential structure need to be physically occupied as a residence. However, pursuant to the terms of the APR, the structure must remain a residential structure. Nowhere in the language, as it says, it can look like one in any way, shape, or form. It says it must remain a residential structure, and therefore, the Board reasoned that any alterations proposed or executed must be considered, consistent with the residential provisions of the Massachusetts Building Code. That is very clear in the language that they wrote, Attorney Manning. It doesn't say has, that it can look like one. It says it must remain one. By definition, to remain a residential structure by Massachusetts Building Code, it must maintain the bedrooms for the sleeping and the eating areas by code. That's not, that's not something that can be negotiated. That's what the code dictates in the state of Massachusetts. If they change the language, that would be different. But it doesn't say it can just look like one. It must remain one per Massachusetts Building Code, and that's what I have, what I have read here. I understand what you're trying to say, but this is what the Farm Bureau wrote, and this is what I have to stand on. It has to remain a residential structure per code."
But again, it hasn't even got to you yet, Joe, with all due respect. We, we're not going to be getting to you for a long time down the road, till after we've got finalized plans approved by the Farm Bureau, when we can hash that out, because it's just poorly written. Because it makes no sense to say that you don't have to use it as a residence, but it has to remain a residence. So in other words, if you're not going to use it as a residence because of the restriction here, they're going to say, well, then that building cannot be used.
Okay, well, I understand.
So that can't be due. That, that would be an unconstitutional taking of a property. So that obviously, they obviously didn't think that out. And I, and again, I'm looking at this as, as they're interpreting it, that they want the horse to look like a horse, not a donkey. And, and they want this house to remain looking like a house, consistent with your, your concerns that we don't put up some monstrosity of a manufacturing facility. We're going to have something that looks like a barn in the house, and that's all I think they're saying. And we're going to hash it out later. It's not, I don't think it's for us to hash out now.
But here's the problem. It does pertain to me right now for this reason. If it's to remain a single residence per building code, if this Board was to approve this tonight, let's say they did, okay, and you go to apply for a building permit for that structure, I would have to deny it under, because it would violate the zoning of the town adjournment pertaining to that single-family residence. And that is outlined clearly in the building code, that I cannot violate zoning whatsoever on a building permit if it remains a single-family residence. And the Board was to approve it, because they can't do the setback, I could not issue a building permit by law, even if I wanted to. I couldn't do it. The language would have to change, Attorney Manning, is what I'm trying to explain to you. It does pertain to me right now.
I'm telling you, Joe, it's going to change. This isn't the final say on the, on the plans. We don't even have plans for the building. You're, you're anticipating turning down our building permit before we've even come to your office with plans. What I'm saying to you is, is this has nothing to do with the zoning issue before the Board tonight, all right? We have to do plans after that. We still have to get planning board approval. We have to go back to the, the Farm Bureau to get their approval, and then maybe they'll clarify and make something consistent such that when I walk in your office for building permit, you're finally going to greet me with a big smile and hand me a permit. But don't anticipate denial now based upon language which is peripheral to or not on point with the issue. The issue is, can we grow cannabis with an APR? Unequivocally the answer is yes. Have we met the standard for a variance? Unequivocally, yes. That's what you have to focus on. That's what I say your job is. If we've met the standard for a variance, and we've satisfied the requirements that you've asked us to satisfy, then you need to vote and vote affirmatively. Not anticipate problems that could materialize or could not materialize down the road.
Well, I think what the building inspector was just trying to instill was that he, you have to understand that if we were to grant this on the limited relief that you're seeking at this point, that you would probably still need some further relief. And I think he's just trying to sort of caution you, moving forward, that that may be an obstacle, that even if he wanted to grant the permit, he feels that he's, he's bound by the terms and the definition of what a dwelling unit is and a residential structure, and therefore, you'd have to send you back here. And, you know.
And Mr., with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, no, no one is, is anticipating anything. You know, again, I told you, this is, this is one step in the process. So, so, you know, when we go to the Farm Bureau, we can, we can point this out to them and the problem they've created, and they might say, oh, that's not what we meant, and give a revised decision approving the plans such that it'll satisfy Mr. Braga, and we'll be able to go forward. But again, we have many steps to get there, and, and we're just trying to get through that initial hurdle so that we can start working on these other steps.
Thank you. I've got a gentleman who would like to make a comment. You have to identify yourself, name and address, please.
John Buckley. I'm architect representing Claudia.
That's right, okay.
So my, my only input here on the topic is that it's my understanding that the restriction that the building remain a residence is so in perpetuity, when, if and when the property were ever sold, that it would revert back to a residential use, so that having the building remain a residence but unoccupied, that in the future, when someone were to purchase the property and transform the warehouse and the fields to some other farm use, that it was part of the original APR that this property have that residence on it. And I think that that is a meaningful distinction, and, and it seems like it's gray area in the language, but that's probably language that can be sussed out with the Farm Bureau when we, as Attorney Manning has stated many times, we will have to go back to them. We're going to have to go in front of a lot of different people. I, I think that's meaningful. That's all I wanted to say.
Any questions?
No questions.
All right. I guess they can't. So Attorney Manning, if you don't mind, I'm just, I, I've stated before, and I make it clear, that I, we had concerns, the use, I don't have a concern, I mean, I, I don't, I had a concern with the use, but I think you clearly demonstrated that, yes, cultivation of marijuana is allowed in the, on the property. It's still agriculture, I believe in that. I believe it's agricultural use. I don't think you're changing the use, except the use is not allowed in the district that you're in, and that's why you're here for use variance. We understand that. Also, I think you've demonstrated that that piece of property met the statutory requirements for a variance, as the soil is not suitable for, most of the soil is suitable for agriculture. I, and I also believe that you're very close to proximity of, of what was allowed under the town hall, that to, town meeting to establish the marijuana overlay district. The, you submitted a memo back in March, and this had to do with standards for granting special permit per Section 375-4.4, those are the criteria required. If you were in the overlay, marijuana overlay district, that you have to meet nine, I believe, nine standards or something like that.
The special permit, yes.
With the special permit. And you, you said that you've met all the standards. Do you believe that you meet the standards?
Yes.
Even being what, within, I'm not sure, being within the 500 feet of a residential structure right now, or?
As I recall, those, those requirements of special permit is within a res, 500 feet of a residence. And, and you're going to put a restriction on us, that our house cannot be used as a residence.
That's, that's where we're coming back. That's where we're coming back to. I think those standards, we are non, right?
It says it, nondiscretionary.
Because we had a similar case on Fons Corner, I believe, and we turned it down because, for the same reason, because we were advised by town council that you can't, you have to meet the standards. They're non, I mean, I... And I'm not sure how to interpret the, the, the letter from the Farm Bureau. That's why I was questioning whether that, and clearly in other paragraphs, it says, yes, you're entitled to cultivate- That's why I was questioning whether that, and clearly in other paragraphs, it says, yes, you're entitled to cultivate and even sell on the farm. You know, which is, you're not even here for the, for the retail. So I understand, it's very confusing. I'm just trying to.
When you say sell, you're referring to the APR says it's allowed in the APR, but that's nothing, that's got nothing to do with.
No, no, on the, on the Farm Bureau, I think they, you're in the APR, they aren't allowed on the farm. Yeah, if it's allowed by zoning, whatever, but, but I said, even they say you're allowed to do it. So certainly cultivation is allowed by the APR. But that language with the residential home, it's troubling. And I, I'm not an attorney, and I'm not sure how we interpret this, you know? And I figured four different people read it, and they have probably four different interpretations. So I'm, I'm not really sure.
So, so again, I'm not playing semantics, but under the special permit requirements, the overlay district, number three says, is the 500-foot radius, and it says school, daycare facility, library, et cetera. And then it says where children commonly congregate are residents, single family and multifamily.
Single or multi, yeah.
Right. So, so again, you can have a residential structure that is not a residence, and that's what we're going to have. My, my office is a residential structure. It was built as a house. It is not used as a residence. A residence is where people actually lay and put their head down. I think Mr. Maderas and Mr. Hume can testify, when we talk about residence for purposes of jurisdiction, it's where somebody lays their head down and sleeps, et cetera. We're, we're accepting the restriction that that cannot be used as a residence. And I think there's a distinction between that and what a residential structure is in terms of the Farm Bureau, that will have to clash out. But I think what we've presented is completely consistent and meets the requirements of the special permit provisions in the overlay district as we discussed before.
Not according to the building commissioner who is looking at the state building code.
That's, that's what I go back to. And I understand Attorney Manning and his argument. The point is, it's not just the future that I'm looking at, I'm looking at the language. According to the Massachusetts Building Code, that's it. According to the Massachusetts Building Code, which I read the definitions, that structure.
That's the language in the Farm Bureau decision.
I know, Mr. Manning, let me finish, please.
I apologize.
According to the Farm Bureau, it must remain that per the building code. I can only read what I, what I enforce, what I've been trained in to understand about the Massachusetts Building Code, which says it must have this in it. Your office, your structure may be different. This Farm Bureau is very clear that it must remain a residential structure per Massachusetts Building Code. That's what I enforce. Those are the differences. Tonight, this is affecting what is happening here because of the language that the Farm Bureau wrote, not me. It's what the Farm Bureau put in, in writing, Attorney Manning. And that's what I have to look at when I sit here, looking at this, is you do not meet that standard, because it is the proposed cultivation building is going to be within 500 feet of what the Farm Bureau stated needs to remain a residential structure by Massachusetts Building Code. That's, that's what I have to go by.
Two completely separate things.
It's not two different things, Mr. Manning.
Under, under the overlay district bylaw, it says you can't be within 500 feet of a residence, which is where people actually reside and live, all right? The Farm Bureau's peripheral language, which really isn't relevant to this today, that we need to address, says they want it to remain as a residential structure, but we don't have to occupy it as a residence. So that's consistent with saying that we can have this residential-looking structure that is not occupied as a residence. For the purposes of, Mr. Chuba's question, which was under section three of the special permit requirements, you're going to say it can not be used as a residence. And we agree. So there's no structure within 500 feet that is a residence. For the Farm Bureau's conflicting language, we'll go back to the Farm Bureau and hash that out. So yes, we have met every one of the requirements. We did that about three minutes, meetings ago, back in March, when I went through every one of these. And the Farm Bureau's decision doesn't change it. They, they're not the final interpreter of the building code or anything, Mr. Bragger is, okay? They, they just have this language in here, which I think they didn't, was not artfully drawn. And we'll address it when we go to them with the plans, because we got, we got to try to meet their standards, as they're not fully drawn as they are. And I think we'll hash it out and have language, have something revised, get approved plans, then go Mr. Bragger, and everyone's happy. But again, I think that's, everything that we've presented does meet those standards.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. There's a lady in the audience who'd like to come forward. I'll give you an opportunity to.
Did we close the floor?
I'm not sure. Will come forward.
Susan Gadducci, Precinct Nine. The reason, when, when that piece of property was protected through CPC funding, it was requested by the town that it be protected with an APR, in which case, we engaged the Farm Bureau to place the restriction on. My feeling is that it was written that way because the farmer would have been living on the farm. And I also want to bring to your attention that is, it is not only one living space, but there is also an ancillary apartment attached to that home. So there's actually two places where a farmer and anybody hired as farm labor could live in that building. So it was the wishes of town meeting to protect this property as agriculture with a residence for a farmer and also potentially for farm labor.
You don't have to leave, but the thing is, is we have specific language from the Farm Bureau saying that.
Doesn't have to.
The board found there is no obligation that the residential structure needs to be physically occupied as a residence. So that sort of negates whatever the intent you claim to be, that there was going to be a farmer living there and operating the farm or help or whatever it may be. They specifically state in this letter, which is what convolutes this for us, and it's what makes it even further struggling.
I mean, not to get into a whole discussion about what you should and what you shouldn't do, but typically, the farmer lives on the farm. That's, that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Dave Tattelbaum, Pearl Street in South Dartmouth. Normally, I would make a statement that I speak here for myself, but in this case, I do not. I firmly represent the entire select board in unanimity against the proposal. We've had individual departments for many years, the Ad Commission, Conservation Commission, Community Preservation, make this into a project to protect this land. And, and it should remain that way for all those reasons. I understand the hardship, and we fully appreciate the hardship that the, the proposal has, where it came from, but there's got to be other ways to, and I know your job is to try to, to, to interpret hardship and do the best you can for the proposal, but in this particular case, there has to be a different way. Our town has spoken that this should remain protected farmland in a way that, and it's unfortunate that it's come to this, but I think that what are all our boards and all the hard work done over these years, where your government has spoken and said, this should be and has to be protected land? Why would, why would we want, how are we going to attract people if we, if we turn this stuff over on a, to the point where they, why would they even want to do it and participate? Because it's been clear, this is to be protected land. And there's got to be a different way to provide for that hardship. And once again, I speak in unanimity for our select board. We've written that way till you let you know. And I would, I would ask you to try to find a way to, to satisfy this hardship in some form, but not to convert it to what it's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tattelbaum, I just want to make it clear. You do understand that there's, unequivocally, this letter states that the crop that they want to grow there is a crop that's allowed by the Farm Bureau and allowed under the APR. So it is a form of farming. It's still a form of farming.
I understand, but there's also restrictions.
Much as you and I may disagree about farming, but according to this letter, they've taken the position that it's unequivocally an allowed crop.
Well, I, I guess, and I'm, I don't want to do your job, that's not why I'm here, but there's also some restrictions about what's going to happen to land in the back, which sounds like that's going to be a major issue, because the claim is that that's not arable land, but that's what they want. So I, and that's your job, not mine.
Well, actually, actually, the Farm Bureau is suggesting that you folks, the select board, actually require them to present an annual farm plan to you, and it's going to be to your satisfaction that it meets the requirements. So that's what they're suggesting. I'm not saying you have to do any of that. I'm just saying that that's what this letter is suggesting, that needs to be done by the, by the select board in order to ensure enforceability with the farmland in the back, or the forest land in the back. And I'm sure Attorney, Attorney Manning would get up and said, I would say, he'd say that they absolutely would, would provide whatever was necessary and required.
Well, I, I think you got a really difficult job here, tough decision to make. And I, I stand by what our government has done and said unequivocally that it has to, should remain as it is. Now, you need to interpret whether that the Farm Bureau is allowing us to do that. And it, to me, they made it more confusing than understanding, because they've given you all kinds of curveballs, and I really appreciate that part. And I, when I read it, I said the same thing. This is going to make this decision even more difficult. But I, I just, I just want to make a point, and we feel uni, unanimous, without question, that we need to protect the way our town government works and how it's spoken in this regard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your listening.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to have Mr. Cody come up, and then you can come up next. He had his hand up, that's all. I saw him first.
Good evening. Cody Hatad, Assistant Town Administrator. So I received this letter initially from the Farm Bureau. I also had a conversation with Warren Shaw, who is the chair of the Farm Bureau, and Brad Mitchell, the director of the Farm Bureau. And obviously, this, these two last paragraphs came up in conversation. It's interpreted exactly how it's read. They can't force you to, to live in a structure. You just, we have abandoned houses throughout town. You can't force somebody to live in a residential structure, but it's still a residential structure. So they're saying it must remain a residential structure. And then the only other piece I'd bring up is, the, the Farm Bureau is requiring that the land remain commercial agricultural land. It says in the last paragraph. So the argument of, you know, soil shape topography should be considered if it has to remain agricultural land. What's the hardship?
Well, I think that they indicated to us that they were having a lot of difficulty utilizing the property for various reasons, because, one, it was wet, two, it wasn't conducive to growing things. Secondly, there was a lot of, there were a lot of wildlife that would come in and certainly inhibit their ability to be profitable and whatever else. I think, am I speaking correctly, gentlemen? Well, those, that was my recollection of what went on, and this is going back probably a couple of months already. And that presentation was made both in written form and verbally by Attorney Manning, and I think it was quite extensive in what that was. And I do know that there was some report that was also to counter that. There was a report from Soil Analysis or whatever else to, to counter that. But I don't know how much weight I would, I gave that, just given the, the simple understanding of what transpires on a farm.
Yeah, I can really understand it. And again, I'm not here to suggest one way or another or make the decision for you. My job working for the town is to provide you with the information, the best information possible.
We thank you for that.
And the last paragraph, it's clear that pursuant to the APR, the agricultural field in its entirety must be sustained as a commercial agricultural land. But the, the argument is that it can't be sustained as, as agricultural land. So how, how can they be in compliance with the APR if it can't be sustained as agricultural land? It's clear. It says it must be sustained as commercial agricultural land. There's that piece, and I'll leave that for your interpretation, but it's pretty clear. But the paragraph above, I spoke, like I said, the, the chair of the board, Warren Shaw, and also their executive director. And the way it was described to me was, we can't force somebody to live in a home. You can't, you can't force somebody to live in a home. But we can say it has to remain residential. And I would, you denied a previous, or allowed the applicant to withdraw previously on Fons Corner Road, they were close to a residential structure. You didn't take into account whether that residential structure was being occupied or not. You took into account that was a residential structure.
Which one is this again?
On Fons Corner Road.
Yeah, but that, the issue with that one was within 1,000 feet of another marijuana facility.
We're also within 500 feet of a residential structure.
That I don't recall. It might be true, but I don't recall that part.
They were.
Okay. Do you guys remember any of that?
I think there was, there were two. There were two. One, he had control, I think, he, either he bought it and he said, I'm, I'm going, it won't be a residential structure. Another one was a residential structure.
And I'd also say, the Farm Bureau operates in a bubble, so they look at their APR for enforcement. So it's on us, it's on the town to look at the whole picture, not just the, the APR, but the zoning too. Once the, if it's okay with the Farm Bureau, they don't, they don't need to give zoning approval. So plans that go back to the Farm Bureau, it doesn't matter what our zoning is to them. They're saying, and very clearly, APRs that are held by them, you can cultivate marijuana. There's no argument there. I think we can all agree on that. But the APR does have provisions. They've laid out what those provisions are, but that's all they enforce. So as far as going back with plans, you know, based off of what restrictions you put on, the Farm Bureau, you know, with all due respect, doesn't care about restrictions that the town puts on it. They operate within their jurisdiction, which is the APR. So that's, that's certainly something I would ask you to consider.
Thank you. Hold on.
Margaret Sweet, Precinct Nine. I just have one comment. This is a farm, and yes, you can grow marijuana on a farm, but a farmer grows marijuana on a farm. They don't lease the farm to some big company to come and manage it. If a farmer wants to grow marijuana and he can do it, that's fine. But in this case, the farmer is not doing it. They're subleasing it to some company that's out of state or out of town.
Oh, well, Mr. Manning, thank you.
So that's, that's my feeling, okay?
Okay, thank you. Hold on, I think Mrs. Arseneau wanted to speak. She had raised her hand earlier.
You know, again, you can't just make stuff up. We've never said that it was going to be leased, leased to anyone. We've always said that Ms. Arseneau is the one who's going to be operating this entire production, just as she's been doing the farm, nothing is, nothing else. I don't know where Ms. Sweet got that from, but that's nothing that's been presented to this board.
Thank you. And moreover, to the point, the argument of, you know, the, the land itself right now is a hardship because it's hard to grow things on. It is. And part of the proceeds, if we're allowed to do this, would be cycled back into improvements of the land to make a commercial farm back there viable, which currently, it's just not. And I think that's an important argument. I mean, a lot of this proposal is to keep a working farm in order. Claudia has been doing this for a while, and it's not been easy. It's not been feasible, really. And I think that that argument should be taken into consideration.
Okay. I'd rather let you speak once. I'll give you one more opportunity, but this will be the final one, and then we got to, we got to make a choice here. We've got a decision as a board to make.
Farming is challenging, as everybody knows. And if you, you have to be able to, to, you have to be able to, to change directions very quickly in order to sustain an operation. There has been no farming on that property for a number of years now. If there was going to be any kind of experimentation this past summer with, as, as was stated, there have been some reports about wet soils where nothing could be grown. This would have been the perfect opportunity to prove everybody wrong, because, as you know, we've just gone through a severe drought. So, and is, and to address that whole issue of, of wildlife, eating, any good farmer has fencing. If you go around, if you go anywhere around town now, anybody who's growing anything has deer fencing or some type of electric fencing to keep out predators. So there's, it's, it's, it's complex. And if you can't switch directions and come up with another type of farming to do, other than just growing marijuana in a building. other than just growing marijuana in a building, then you're really not a farmer. That's not the occupation for you.
Thank you. Sure. I'm gonna let this little lady in the back also make a comment.
So I know there's some concern about the APR. And that, to quote the selectman, "I bought that property as a farm, and I shouldn't be able to make a profit on it." Is it the intent of an APR for farmers to just struggle and continue to be poor? The farm needs a lot of help. When I got it, I was the highest bidder out of two bids when I purchased it. It needs a lot of work. The cannabis would actually give me the money to fix everything that needs to get fixed. I have been growing stuff on that farm. I continue to do my best. Things are very expensive. It is very expensive to be a farmer. There is actually legislative right now that they're allowing hunters to shoot more deer because the deer are such a problem. Last time I went to the Farm Bureau, they were addressing that. So you can laugh at me and say, "Oh, the deer are getting her vegetables," but it is a fact. I have a very, when you have hundreds of acres and a deer come and take a patch, it doesn't matter. But when you have three workable acres, it matters. I don't believe the Farm Bureau. I think they imply that I could move on with this. They told me that I could do this. They know the restrictions. We went, before I spent so much more money and time and energy, we agreed that I didn't have to live in this house. It's going to be used every day. In order to get the Farm Bureau to approve, I sent them a whole farm management plan where for the next five years, I put money into fixing the farm. That is the whole point. I want to start a non-cannabinoid medicinal herb farm on the property. The house is not going to be the office space for the cannabis. It is actually for that nonprofit. I want to use the farm as a medicinal herb farm, all encompassing. And that's going to take a lot of money. It's going to take a lot of money to get that, I mean, I'm not in my fields in my protected farmland. I am replacing a barn with another barn. I am not changing the farm. I am really trying to adapt and grow a crop that could save my farm, that could do all the things that I need to do. Now, if we need to go back to the Farm Bureau so that you don't say no today and get clarification on what they meant, then that's what we'll do. But they know what I'm trying to do here. They've approved what I'm trying to do here. They've approved the building. It's for agricultural purposes. It is my rights of ownership on that APR land to be able to do this. I haven't just bought this two years ago, and now I'm trying to flip it to become a marijuana farm. I've owned this property for 10 years. I have done a lot. We had everything on that farm. Organic vegetables, cows, sheep, pigs, goats, chickens, all at the same time, and we still failed with five of us. It is just me now. I don't, you can't find someone to go work for $20 an hour. Try and get them to come to my field and pick vegetables and hurt their backs for $10 that I could afford to pay them, which I can't. This is, you have to look at the big picture. I understand that the town is upset that this once was APR land, but you're not looking at the big picture of what good it could do, not only for the community, but for this actual piece of property. Not just my family. And you all scoff like it's not true, but like, what else is going to happen there? Some rich hobby farmer is not going to buy that farm and live on that corner. That's not going to happen. You wanted a poor family, specifically, a poor family to buy this challenging piece of property. Tons of farmers told you not to put it in APR, and that is the truth. You wanted a poor family. Well, we were poor. We were on mass health when we bought this place. I'm still on mass health. We were poor. You succeeded, but you didn't give us the resources. You can't, you have, I believe that you have to give young farmers an opportunity, but you have to give them the resources to succeed. You know, we wanted to be farmers. We did everything we could on this property. It is not sustainable. I am taking a building. I'm replacing it with a new one. I'm not in my farmland. I'm not changing the landscape of the property. And all the money that I am able to make will only benefit the community and that farm. In order to get a host community agreement and to go in front of the Cannabis Control Commission, you need a positive impact plan for your community. My positive impact plan is about farming. It's about growing medicinal herbs, not just cannabis. And I was able to present that to the Farm Bureau. And I'm happy to present it to the people that don't believe in this project. But the fact is, this farm is sinking. And unless you have lots and lots and lots of money, sure, I can put up a fencing. You want to let me borrow 10 grand to put it up? The only reason I'm here, the only reason I'm here is because eight of my girlfriends believed in the project and gave me money to hire Mr. Manning. That's why I'm here. Those are my big partners. Eight mothers, teachers, business owners, girlfriends of mine. Because they believe that this is, they've seen me struggle. They've seen me give up the birthday parties. They've seen me in those fields, day in, day out. This year, I did not work as hard because I had to go get a job to pay for everything. I need to be able to feed my son. I've never made tons of money farming, not enough to support myself. I've always had to have an extra job. Now I have two. I teach English as a second language. And I bartend, and I farm. This would give me the opportunity to make all the changes this property needs. It could be a wonderful thing. It doesn't affect my neighborhood. My neighborhood is a prison, a mental health facility, and hospitals, and another farm across the road. Like, it doesn't, I just want to take one building, take it down, put another building. If I was, if all of a sudden St. John's Wort became super valuable because it cured cancer, would you allow me to grow St. John's Wort in that building? It's growing, no farms, no medicine. I'm sorry. This is just a continuation of what I'm already doing. And I am going to grow the cannabis. I'm gonna have help. People are gonna have to teach me how to grow it. It's not been allowed. But it doesn't mean, if Round the Bend wanted to hire someone to take care of a new crop, no one would be, no one would question it. I'm doing the best I can here. We've already gone through the house stuff. I've spent additional, you know, architectural fees redesigning things, coming back, coming back. And you know, thankfully, I got a pro bono lawyer that I met at the cannabis convention that handled the Farm Bureau for me, Ms. Paula Collins, that's on that thing. You know, this is a lot. I will go back to the Farm Bureau. I'll have them clarify that. The house is going, the only thing is my bed's not going to be, right now, if you go in my bedroom, there's a chainsaw and a weed whacker in there. And all my seeds are in the bathroom. And like, there's stuff, you know, it's the same thing. I'm gonna, the Echinacea and the St. John's Wort that I'm gonna grow in the fields that I'm going to put money into, I'm gonna dry them in my office. I'm gonna use the, like, the same, the house is gonna be used in the same way, all the same ways. I do all my farm stuff from that house already. The only difference is that I'm not sleeping there at night. Also, I would think that the 500 feet, this is my house. It's not a neighbor. I can control what happens to that house. It's not like 500 feet from a resident where it's my neighbor who has children or whatever. It's my house. I think there is a little bit of leeway there where the 500 feet where it's not my neighbor. I totally understood, I would understand that if my neighbor was 500, but it's mine. You know, it's part of the package. It's part of the property. And it would be a great office space for the non-cannabinoid medicinal farm. All those things take money. Starting a cannabis company is going to take money. Someone said, "Oh, now I'm just gonna be able to make money." It's not like, "Oh, I'm gonna make money off this." It takes a lot of work, a lot of dedication, which I have proven that I keep coming back. You know, and I'm going to keep coming back because I do think it's within my rights of ownership to be able to start a cannabis company on that farm. I'm one of the female farmer, one of the very few farmers that has given this opportunity in the United States. Cannabis farming has been left out of our reach until recently. This is a great opportunity for the town to support me and to support their women farmers and encourage me, not continue to try and bring me down over it was protected farmland. It's still protected farmland. Nothing about that changes. The farm stays the same, except where there's a building, another one will go in its place. I'm not, I don't, I feel like this is a lot of just, you know, personal and just, you know, I might not be the best farmer, but I am a farmer. I'm out there. I do the best that I can. I will continue. I'm not in a position to sell the property. That's not going to happen. So would we rather see it just continue to deteriorate? Because let me tell you, what I used to make as a bartender is not the same after COVID. So it's only going to get worse for me. So I think if you're leaning towards a no, I'd ask you to let me go back to the Farm Bureau and get that, some kind of clarification on that. But I would love to get this matter resolved and have you all agree that I really don't understand. I don't understand where you're coming from. This is a great opportunity for this piece of property. It isn't rolling hills in, you know, paid narum of hundreds of acres. If a pack of deer come in, I'm done. Like, they get everything. How am I supposed to continue to sustain myself on this property, farming by myself? It's cannabis. It's a crop.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Karen Schwalbe, Executive Director of the Southeastern Massachusetts Agricultural Partnership, CMAP. My residence is in Falmouth. And I just wanted to let the board know that CMAP's work is to support farmers in their business and technical assistance operations, and that Ms. Arsenio is working with CMAP to develop a farm plan to meet the requirements of the APR, to keep the land farmable and to develop the medicinal herbal operation. So she has made effort to work with us to help develop that plan. And we have the ability to offer her that service into the future.
Thank you. All right. So, gentlemen, I guess we've got a couple of choices that we've got to decide upon here. We can decide to move forward and render a decision, either yea or nay, on this this evening. We can allow them, based on the situation and what's been brought with the building inspector, which I don't think they're going to want to consider, but we always give people, if we think it's going in a direction where we're not going to allow it, we give them an opportunity to withdraw. But I'm not saying that that's something that they would be wanting to do or willing to do, or that we're even going in that direction per se. And I think that the other option would be is, and I think you kind of just, I heard you mumble it, and we heard it from, leave Ms. Arsenio's as part of her presentation, was that we grant them an opportunity to get a little clarification about that last paragraph as to specifically what they're trying to say, because we find it to be conflicting where it's a residence and it doesn't need to be occupied, and what they're actually, what they believe the APR is, the language is restricting, or what they're expecting there to be imposed. I'll be honest with you. I'm having a little bit of difficulty here as a member of the zoning board trying to enforce APR restrictions. All right? It's just, I typically try to keep things simple when we approach these things and argue that they're outside of our purview. But the problem is, is that this is an actual restriction. It's a recorded restriction at the registry. It's a deed restriction. And we shouldn't be doing anything that violates, one, zoning, and, two, recorded instruments that have some type of use restriction. And that's what we're about. We're about, you know, granting certain types of uses in general. When someone is seeking relief, we either decide whether or not that particular use is in keeping with the intent and purpose of a bylaw or not. That's just one of the criteria. So, you know, that's just, I'm just sharing that just as a general sort of struggle that I'm having here of, you know, why are we enforcing APR restrictions? But yet again, I look at this and say, well, I think we might have to be the board to enforce these types of restrictions because I think Mr. Cody Hadad, is it? Mr. Hadad had indicated that they're expecting, I think they're expecting us to enforce this, or the town to enforce this, town boards, town agencies to enforce this, given that it's specifically been recorded. So I don't want to sound like I'm being redundant here. So I'm just kind of throwing it out there. Alvin, what are your thoughts? Maybe there's another option that I haven't considered here yet.
I wish there were another option. I think I would want to hear something from the Farm Bureau saying that, what Mr. Manning said, namely that we don't care. We know that structure has to look like a residence, but it doesn't have to be a residence. Then I can live with what the town bylaw says and put that restriction into an approval. But I would want to hear that from them based on that terrible paragraph that they added to their letter, which really didn't make any sense to me. I even read it five times to try to figure out what it meant. But I think that's, I hate to do that to you, Mr. Manning, but I would want to hear them say what you say you want them to say. Namely, just make it, just keep it looking like a house. That's fine. Nobody can live there, and we can deal with the concept of residence.
How about you?
I agree with Attorney Newman. I think, you know, I think I brought this up before. I think the first hearing when we were here, I think I mentioned the 500 foot with the, and I'm looking at this from zoning perspective, and I appreciate all the input from different boards and everything. But here, as a Board of Appeals, our job is to look at every case, case by case basis, and whether this, I felt that this piece of property met the statutory requirements for variance. And I think we, most of us felt this way. That's the intention, that's the impression we gave Attorney Mannings, and that's why they kept going. And I understand there was other issues with towns. I live in town. I care about the appearance. I care about what this thing's gonna look like. They hired an architect. He worked with, to address most of the concern, and he came up with the nice design of a barn that would look something similar to the agricultural structure. And you are on a farm. You're growing a product that is grown on a farm. The Farm Bureau says this is, yes, you can do this on a farm. You're replacing a barn with a barn, and you're providing Ms. Arsenio the means that she can sustain the property, which is the intention of everyone in town. We wanted to sustain that piece of property. So I think I would feel more confident if we addressed the zoning part of it because, again, I had, we denied another similar, well, not similar, another case within the Marijuana Overlay District because they didn't meet the setback requirements but of being 500 feet away from a residential structure. If we can clarify that the structure is to be, to have the appearance of a residential structure, but doesn't have to be occupied as a structure, I can, I would, I think I would be more comfortable of rendering a decision on this one.
Sure.
You've all made my point. There's two separate things going on here. The special permit requirements don't say residential structure. They say within 500 feet of a residence. That's the zoning issue you've got to deal with. If you put a restriction on the variance that that house or that building cannot be used as a residence, we are in compliance with it. What, then what you're doing to Mr. Chairman's point is you're talking about enforcing restrictions for the Farm Bureau, the APR, restrictions which might not exist. It's no different than you now sending me to conservation because you saw a puddle in the backyard. You know, that's really beyond your purview. You are right, Mr. Jubal. You're supposed to focus on the zoning issue. And the only issue with residence or residential structure or anything is number three of the Overlay District Special Permit Requirements, 500 feet within a residence. And we're saying, put a restriction on it that it cannot be used as a residence. There's no other structure within 500 feet.
Attorney Manning, I would agree with you if that piece of property didn't have the APR on it. If that property didn't have that, absolutely, we can say...
What does the APR have to do with the zoning issue? Nothing. Nothing. It's something, there's some language in that decision about how we're going to design the building or what we're going to do that we have to hash out with them. But no matter what they say, we can or can't do, we cannot use it as a residence. So therefore, the zoning issue never changes. Even if they come back and say, "Okay, Manning, you were right. Just don't let it look like a structure." Again, that has no bearing on whether or not we've complied with those nine requirements. Because if there's a restriction of no residence, then there is no residence within 500 feet, irregardless of what the Farm Bureau says or does. And that's the issue I have. And don't worry about kicking the can down the road again, because it doesn't affect me. It affects my client. You two gentlemen attorneys, you know. We don't take this personal. You know, I'll be back arguing with some others on the Board of Appeals next week. But you know what? This woman has been run through the wringer. Has sat here and been insulted about her ability to farm, about everything about her, from her lifestyle to her farming techniques. And that has been wrong, okay? And I think you have, you've stated several times, we've met all the requirements for variance. Then I don't know what you're going to do. You can kick the can down the road. If I was sitting over there, you grant the variance if you've got the requirements for the variance. That's what you do. That's what we do as Boards of Appeal.
All right. What you stated is noted. However, what we do have to struggle with here is the fact that even if we grant this... Even if we grant this, if you were to file for a building permit the very next day, the interpretation of our very building inspector is...
But I have a pause there. Mr. Jubal, with all due respect, I have said it 20 times. We've got to get licensing from the state. We've got to get a community home agreement. We have to go to Planning Board. We have to go back to the Farm Bureau. We're not going to see Mr. Bragg for a long time. I'm probably going to be in here requesting an extension of the variance because we're not going to be able to get through all the approvals and licenses needed.
But everything else still be in constant. Let's assume it's a year from now or two years from now. You go before him. This issue has still not been resolved, based on the interpretation of what he believes that paragraph to be.
But when we go to the Farm Bureau is where we're going to address that paragraph.
Well, why can't we address it now rather than later?
Well, are there any conservation issues or border health issues or maybe some policing issues or fire department issues that you would like me to address before we go ahead further? I mean, I'm being sarcastic, but with all due respect... You know, you keep asking her to fix things and address things which admittedly have nothing to do with zoning. She wants you to do it. By all means, do it.
Can I... Attorney Mannings, as I said before, we look at each case by case by case basis. And it's unique in a different way because this has an APR on it. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
So, let me just say one thing. When you first came before us with the petition, that house was not going to be a residence. It was going to be some office space. So, now, at that point, we had no problem with Section 375, 4.4, the 500 feet of a residence. Then the issue got muddled when you went to before the Farm Bureau and asked them if you could grow... Growing marijuana was farming, and I always thought it was, so I didn't think there was going to be any issue. Then they muddled it with that paragraph about residence because your intent was to either knock that building down, put up a new building, or use it as office space. Now, they come back and say, "Nope, it's got to be a residence." So, my problem is, how do I get around 500 feet of a residence? That's the problem. So, that's why I said earlier, I would like to see something from the Farm Bureau that says, "We just want it to look like a residence. It doesn't have to be a residence." And then I'd be more comfortable approving your petition.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Gardner?
I'm good.
All right. So, are we going to grant them a continuance to provide us some clarification?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we still need to take a vote.
We need something from Mr. Manning's requesting that.
Okay. Mr. Manning?
Listen, my client is requesting to go for clarification from the Farm Bureau.
All right. When's our next meeting, Michelle?
12th of October.
October 12th. Think that'd be sufficient time?
This is already September, what, 21st?
Yeah, it is.
November 26th.
No, I don't envision it happening in three weeks.
October 26th?
I'll sign the paperwork for a continuance for October 26th. If I can't... If she can't get it before, then I'll contact Ms. Viera and ask for a further extension.
Thank you.
Sorry, it was 10:26?
Yeah. All right. So, I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
I make a motion that we continue Use Variance 2022-01 to October 26, 2022, as requested by Attorney Mannings.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. All right. All right. So, we don't have any other hearings for tonight. We do have some administrative matters, gentlemen. The first matter we have is review and approval of administrative minutes of August 24, 2022.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
I have nothing.
I don't have any comments either. Gentlemen, any comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the administrative minutes of August 24, 2022.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.